Good morning. I will now call to order the September 9, 2021, Clackamas County Board of Commissioners Business Meeting. Today, we have a relatively light agenda as we are returning from our summer recess. Gary, please call the roll.
Thank you Chair Smith. First, our staff support today, Clerk to the Board, Shannon Bays, County Council, Stephen Madcor. Roll call, Commissioner Schrader.
Here.
Commissioner Fisher.
Here.
Commissioner Savas.
Here.
Commissioner Scholl.
Here.
Chair Smith.
Here. Thank you very much. I will now lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everyone. Nice to see a good crowd here. We are holding this meeting in person and virtually. If you've joined us via Zoom for this meeting and are interested in providing public comment, we will prompt you regarding how to do that when the time is right. I would like to remind all participants, including staff, all elected officials, and members of the public that Robert's Rules of Orders will be enforced during this meeting. A quick note about changes in our procedures. We have brought in security to help us keep everyone accessing this building safe. You will continue to see them in our lobby and outside our hearing room every week. We welcome your opinions and look forward to your polite participation. I'm going to read a statement today concerning people in our county and in our government. Governor Brown has placed mandates upon people in certain professions in this state, which also covers some, but not most, county employees. The administration here at Clackamas County will do everything to acknowledge our employees' civil liberties, continued employment without fear of losing jobs, and good health. Over this past Labor Day break, I was reminded that we are all humans. As we move forward in our service to others and the public, let's continue in our efforts to respect each other, respect each person's decision regarding personal choice. Let's act out of compassion and love and not fear because you don't want to be treated that way. These values are important, and these values are what make Clackamas County unique. And I thank you for the opportunity to serve as your chair. Gary, what's up?
Thank you Chair Smith. We will begin with a wildfire update. We have Daniel Nybauer, interim Director of our Disaster Management Department, to present. He is on Zoom, so we'll wait a moment for him to come online here. Go ahead, Daniel. Go ahead.
Good morning Chair Smith, Commissioners Administrator Smith. Quick update on the fire. The fire is now 19,349 acres. That's up 2,100 acres since Tuesday. Containment remains at 7% and personnel assigned are 589. Fire activity increased a little bit on the northwest side of the fire, where around the Upper Dickey Creek, Motherlode Creek, and Panzy Creek drainages, due to some uphill runs, smoke was visible from those uphill runs. The fire has not threatened any structures within the past couple of days. Still, the lookout was lost, or any of the fire lines have not been tested yet. The north and south established containment lines are being patrolled and monitored for hotspots, and firefighters on the fire continue to build additional indirect lines and use helicopter activity to suppress the fire where possible. Fire activity is expected to remain active in the Upper Dickey Creek, Motherlode Creek, and Panzy Creek areas, so we'll likely continue to see smoke from those uphill runs. Warm and dry conditions are going to persist. Temperatures will be around the 70s, 80s, still relatively low humidity levels, and light winds, although some gusts will be up there. But we're expected to see continued kind of slow growth of the fire and not any winds to push the fire quickly, are forecasted at this point.
Thank you for that, Daniel. I know I get, every once in a while, get an email or a message about that being resident of South Clackamas County, where we're sure experiencing the smoke daily. We don't know if it's in our houses or not. I walked out to my car yesterday morning, and I have a white car. It was covered in ash and covered in, I think it was smoke particles. I won't say ash, I should not say that, but smoke particles. I thought, oh, wow, something must have happened overnight. Do we have any comments or questions for Daniel on this topic? Seeing none, Daniel, thank you very much for that report. Whoops, Martha, you're in.
Do you not see the light?
Okay, it just now popped on.
Oh, good, okay.
And Sonia, just for your information, it says Martha.
Oh, hi Martha. How are you over there?
So we'll switch it out.
All right.
And there may be, hey, look, folks, there may be a delay because we have yet another new system, but Commissioner Fisher, please go ahead.
Thank you, Daniel. I really appreciate the updates, and I also appreciate the documents that you provided to the commission, which show the maps. What I'm curious, and we all know that I'm a little bit map-challenged, can you explain like how far the fire is now from areas where there would be more structures? Like where is this, if you could explain what's around it so that all of us can understand?
This is still well within the Boulder Woods Wilderness. It's kind of at the south edge of the Riverside Fire in the Beechey Creek. There's a small unburnt section between those two fires, and it is still at the very bottom of that fire. We're still, I'd have to get the exact mileage, but we're still very far away from any structures or areas with community members in there.
Okay, and when you say very far away, I know you don't have the exact, and I know you don't want to give estimations. Can you give a range about what that would mean? Like, is it between 30 miles to 50 miles or?
I'll have to look at a map and get you a better number, but at its current growth, it likely would not reach that area before fire season would be over, without any additional winds.
Okay, yeah. I remember that when we had the wildfire event last year, can't believe this, just a year ago. Seems like yesterday, that fire traveled so fast, it was terrifying. So having some idea about that would be helpful. Thank you very much.
Yeah, Lash, I was talking to the Clackamas County Fire Chiefs yesterday, Nick Brown, and we had a talk on that, and he made the comment to me, as we all remember, we had these horrific winds, and it just exploded stuff like that. Today, the wind is lacking, thank you very much. And we're all just really mindful of that. If Daniel's still on there, isn't this on the border between Marion and Clackamas Counties? And we, and both counties share this jurisdiction, although it's Forest Service land, they have the jurisdiction for fighting the fire. And I believe there was a Level 1 evacuation on Brighton Bush Hot Springs in Marion County. And so we're really mindful of fighting on this. When I was talking to Nick Brown yesterday, we've had at least 10 fires in Clackamas County of two acres or more that have been extinguished in really short amount of time. And we've had more fires. We probably had maybe 12, 15 fires. But as you remember, they have the Crew 30. They have brought on through a federal grant, and it's beyond the urban firefighting. They're able to go out and do wildfires and brush that affect many of our residents. And the criticism of our urban fire departments that usually put out house fires is, why aren't you putting out? Well, they didn't have the capacity to do it, so now we do, and they've really amped up their efforts. But we are concerned, as you rightfully said, Commissioner Fisher, that we are in the fire season, and we're all mindful of that. Thank you. Commissioner Savas.
Yeah, I just have a question for Daniel. If you could confirm, or if you're aware, the report that I got on the news, I think, or listened to, was that the current fire that you're referring to is basically abutting or up to some of the burn scars from the last fire. So there's less fuel and less likely that it could really take off. Is that accurate?
Yeah, that accurate. It will burn in the burned areas. There are some underbrushed in some areas that weren't burned, but it will burn much slower through those areas. There is a, I'm not sure how to describe it, but kind of a channel between the Beechey Creek and Riverside fires that does lead up into a populated area. And I just looked, it's about 20 miles away at this point in time. So we will get some advantage out of those burned areas when slowing the growth of the fire. But if the winds were to come through that area, the fire would still have fuel to consume.
Great, thank you.
Any other comments or questions for the presenter? Seeing none. Gary, what's up next?
Thank you, Daniel. Next, we have COVID-19 updates. We are going to add this back to the business meeting agenda for a weekly update, for the short term anyway. Philip Mason-Joyner, the Public Health Director for Clackamas County, will present. He is on Zoom. Wait just a moment. There he is. All right, go ahead.
Good morning Chair Smith and Commissioners. Shannon, if you can go ahead and pull up the slideshow like usual. And while she's doing that, I'll just thank you for the opportunity to meet on Tuesday. It was great to connect with the board again. And as Gary mentioned, moving forward on Thursdays, I'll provide a very brief COVID update for the board during business meetings and the public. For partners and the public who are watching, we will still continue to do the written weekly reports. That will be available on the county's website if they'd like to explore more of the data and more information. Okay, let's go ahead. Next slide, please. Here is our current case and death data, just rolling. Over the past seven days, Clackamas County has seen a little over 1,300 cases and nine additional deaths. Comparing to our neighbors in Multlemick County, they had a little over 2,000 cases and six deaths. And in Washington County, a little over 1,400 cases and three deaths. Next slide. Here is a chart that folks like to see, just in terms of here locally in Clackamas County, each week since the start of the pandemic, what our case counts have looked like locally. So you can see that we are still high in terms of cases. It appears that our increases are slowing down. You can see where Oregon reopened, and that curve was pretty low. We were feeling really good. As we reopen, cases have increased significantly. And you can see right there where the mask requirement has gone into effect, and it does appear to making an impact. So we will continue to monitor that in the weeks ahead, and hopefully it starts to decrease as we, hopefully this is the peak, and it can decrease, but we'll be watching this closely. Next slide. Public health staff continue to look at this data. It's really important to look at the impact on COVID for folks who are vaccinated in comparison to folks that are unvaccinated. And it really is substantial, the difference here. That is why we continue to actively promote and encourage vaccination as one of the key things to do to slow the spread and prevent, you know, we're seeing for folks who are vaccinated, asymptomatic, mild symptoms, you know, really the folks that are unvaccinated, those are the folks that are being hospitalized, that are at risk for severe illness and death, that we're really concerned about. Next slide, please. Hospitalizations, so it continues to be pretty high. We're meeting almost on a daily basis with our hospital partners, monitoring the situation. Across the state of Oregon, in Oregon hospitals right now, 1,138 patients who are COVID-positive are hospitalized. That's up yesterday. And within our region, here, we have only 16 ICU beds available. Out of yesterday, it was only 350 beds available, so a little bit less than earlier in the week due to ongoing staffing challenges. Next slide, please. Earlier this week, Chair Smith asked for a little bit more information on demographics. There are more data available in the weekly written report and also on the Oregon Health Authority's data dashboards that are publicly available. But I do think that just looking at the COVID-related deaths is really interesting. 126 Oregonians died. The most complete updated data we have is August 29. And out of those 126, sorry, I have it written right here. Let's see, about 10, only 10 of those were not hospitalized, those deaths. You can also see that the age of folks who are dying and being hospitalized is younger, becoming up for overtime. Next slide. And public health staff continue to put a lot of resources and energy with partners to provide vaccinations to everyone who wants it. 264,000 people in Clackamas County have been vaccinated to date. Our metric at this point is around 72, a little closer to 73% of our population that are 18 and older have received their first dose compared to the state of Oregon. As of this morning, the Oregon statewide, we're at 73.2%. So just under the state average, but continuing every day to make progress. We have seen an uptick in weekly vaccinations the past few weeks. We're vaccinating a little over 4,000 community members per week, so making some progress on that front. Next slide, please. And this is really important data to continue to look at the demographics around age groups as well. We see, you know, folks who are older adults are really, have been vaccinated at a really high rate, which is wonderful to see, especially considering age, you know, does play a factor in terms of folks, their potential for risk around COVID. So we have work to do to continue to reach folks, especially within, you can see, the 60, the 69-year-old age groups and then younger groups as well. Next slide. We continue to provide local opportunities here in Clackamas County. We have clinics located across the county. That information's on our website. It's being, it continues to be promoted heavily with partners. We also have a few mobile teams that will go out and provide vaccinations for businesses. So we will go to folks' work site to provide vaccinations, and folks can call our call center at 503-655-8224, or they can email us at covidvaccine@clackamas.us. I'll also share that vast majority of all healthcare providers right now, at this point, primary care clinics have vaccines available, as do all the pharmacies. So it really isn't a supply issue. The vaccine is readily available. All days of the week, lots of hours, to make it flexible and easy for folks to get an appointment. So folks that have been holding off getting vaccinated, I really want to encourage you that the risk right now is substantial. We want to prevent folks from being hospitalized and being adversely impacted from this virus. And then, next slide. We also recognize that as a government agency, there are barriers, and the more partnerships and team approach that we can take to address these needs, the better. There is still plenty of funding available. We're really encouraging partner organizations to apply if they would like to help in terms of outreach and continuing to make a positive impact in our county vaccination rates. You can go to clackamas.us grants. It's a very simple application. Due by October 1st, 2021. So the application is coming up, and we do have to spend this dedicated funding money at the end of the calendar year. So it's an opportunity for this fall to really continue to be proactive and reach out to the community. I think that's my last slide. Just before I open it up for questions, I'll share that we continue to get a lot of questions around boosters. At this point, it's not open for, boosters are not yet available for the entire population. It's for folks who are immunocompromised, which is roughly 5% of our entire Clackamas County population. So a small number of folks are eligible for boosters. We will communicate that message out very widely when it becomes available. Vaccine opportunities will be available through pharmacies, through clinics, and through our county-sponsored events as well. And then finally, as you all know, this week, a lot of our students are back in the classroom, which is wonderful. We're doing all we can to work with schools and support them as they make that transition and doing everything that we can to help kids safe and less disruption from the classroom from COVID. So wearing your mask, folks who are eligible, getting vaccinated, and really staying home if you have a student who is sick is so important to keep that classroom healthy. With that, that's all I have to share today. I'm happy to answer any questions that the board may have. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Philip. You mentioned a $30,000 grant available per organization. Can you define organization, and is that private businesses as well?
I believe, I'll double-check this, but I'm pretty sure it's 501(c)(3) organizations. So it's intended for nonprofits.
Okay, all righty. And the nonprofits are aware of this?
We have shared it as widely as we can. I think, you know, that if the board members or any public or partner are watching this, and you can help spread the message, that would be fantastic. It's always hard to reach everyone, and folks are busy, so the more we can put it on the radar, the better.
Okay, maybe we might want to do a little promotion of that, if, that'd be nice. Commissioner Schrader, you're up first.
Yeah, Philip, could you elaborate a little bit on, you answered my question about the booster shots because I've been tracking that through National Public Radio and, you know, and hopefully reputable sources about potentially happening about eight months, I think, after your second shot. But as you said, there's not a, it seems as if there's a supply issue. So when you say immunocompromised for the public, can you give us an example of what that means? What?
I would say someone that has a significant underlying health condition, and really, it would be through consultation with their healthcare provider. Their healthcare provider should, I would encourage folks, if you think this, you might fit under that category, to discuss it directly with your healthcare provider, and that they will be the ones to really guide you and instruct you.
Determine.
Yeah, public health, county public health, we're not going to be screening or going through that process at this point for that, you know, like I said, about 5% of our county population are relying on our healthcare partners to be the ones to provide the vaccine for those folks. Our focus continues to be on providing first and second doses right now.
Okay.
And planning for boosters for the general populations once that goes into effect.
And is it a supply chain issue right now, you think, or?
It's not so much a supply chain issue. I think there's ample supplies right now. It's really waiting for the FDA, OHA to really go through that process to make the final determination and then give us permission to move forward with that.
Yeah, and Pfizer is ahead of Moderna, I think, aren't they? I think.
Martha, can you speak into your microphone?
Oh, I said Pfizer is, I think, already getting approval. Moderna should be close behind.
Exactly, correct.
Okay, thank you. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner. We have several Commissioners in the queue. Commissioner Scholl, you're up.
Yes, Philip. You mentioned 1,300 new cases. Is that just for Clackamas County? And how many of those are vaccinated previously? And how many of them actually show symptoms?
Let's see here. Yes, 1,300 new cases in the past seven days, Clackamas County specifically. And then I would say around, I'll have to pull the data up, but anywhere from 10 to 25% of our cases are what we call breakthrough cases, folks who have been vaccinated and still tested positive for COVID. The vast majority of those folks, it's mild symptoms. They might even be asymptomatic. None of those folks, to my knowledge, are hospitalized.
Philip, if somebody's asymptomatic, how do they come on your radar as one of those 1,300 numbers?
Yeah, a lot of folks have, choose to get tested if they learn that they've come into contact with someone who had COVID. Maybe they were at a barbecue or at some sort of event. They, their contact tracing, they got the heads up. You know, you don't need to quarantine if you're fully vaccinated, unless you start to experience symptoms. We do, you know, for folks who are concerned, we do recommend you get tested about three to five days after you've been exposed, and that'll let you know if you have COVID. If you received, if you got COVID.
Okay, thank you.
Philip, on Tuesday, you talked about Labor Day was supposed to be at peak in Oregon regarding cases, and then it would dip down. Could you address that?
Yeah, I would say that was what the modeling from the state and OHSU showed, is that really this week would be when it hit the peak and it starts to go downwards. So I am seeing, as we, I showed our weekly case graph, that it's really slowing down. I think next week and next couple of weeks, we'll really see if that holds true.
Okay, because yesterday, the governor made an announcement as such, very public announcement, saying that our cases are starting to decline. Commissioner Fisher, you're up next.
Thank you Chair Smith. Philip, I'm interested in what is happening with the schools when a child or children are exposed. I was driving in to the county this morning, and my husband called me and said, oh, my gosh, I just saw in Oregon Live that, and I don't know if I have this right, because I might have remembered it wrong, but 47 kids are self-quarantining or quarantining because they were exposed on a school bus? And I'm not asking for the verification of that. I'm just wondering, what are the protocols when there's an exposure in our school settings? What happens with those kids? What's going on?
Yeah, the schools work really hard to cohort children. If there is a child that is COVID-positive, having exposed other students and met that definition of a close contact, then that cohort would transition to distance learning for their quarantine period. So that is what we're trying to prevent, is those disruptions to keep kids in the classroom. That's why staying home if you're sick is really, really important. You know, parents doing that symptom screening before kids go to school. And also, you know, keeping the mask on and keeping some of those distances and other mitigation, you know, along with washing your hands, practicing good hand sanitation. It's really all of it. It takes all of those tools, and that's why our public health nurses are working so closely with our schools, leadership and staff, to really do all we can to try to prevent those disruptions from happening this year and have as, quote-unquote, "normal" a school year as we possibly can.
Yeah, so I guess what surprised me is if somebody has COVID on a school bus and all the kids are wearing masks, then why is it that everybody has to go out of school for 10 days? Or however long it is? Or is that correct?
If there's the distancing and the mask-wearing on a school bus, then quarantine would not have to happen. But, you know, through our work with the school and the bus driver and the students and the families, you know, through the investigation, if we, just going through that process, there's potential that not all the mitigation tools were put into place. And so when that happens, we do have to follow those team requirements.
Oh, good. That really helps me understand. So if all of the protocols are followed, we aren't going to see these mass stoppages of kids going to school? If there is an out, because we're not going to, COVID's, in my mind, Glad cases are going down, but it's going to be with us for a while. Want to keep kids in school as much as possible.
Yep, that is everyone's shared goal, most definitely.
Thank you.
Thank you, Philip Mason-Joyner. Any other comments for our presenter? Gary?
All right, thank you, Philip. Next is the Consent Agenda. Shannon, would you please read the Consent Agenda by title only?
Human Resources: Approval of a Contract with Compelling Reason LLC for Benefit Delivery Consultation Work. Contract value is $487,045, funded through department monthly benefit administration fees, some of which are county general fund dollars. That is the end of the Consent Agenda.
And elected officials? Are elected officials item?
Oh.
Or is that removed?
I apologize. Approval of previous business meeting minutes.
Does any commissioner wish to remove anything from the consent agenda? Any further comments? Seeing none? Shannon, please take the poll.
I need a motion first.
We need a motion.
I move for approval
Thank you, Paul.
of the consent agenda.
Second.
The motion has been made by Commissioner Shoal to have approval of the consent agenda, seconded by Commissioner Savis. Any further discussion? Seeing none? Please call the poll.
Commissioner Fisher.
She stepped out for a moment.
Oh, sorry. Commissioner Schrader.
Aye.
Commissioner Shoal.
Aye.
Commissioner Savis.
Aye.
Chair Smith?
Aye, motion passes, 4-0. Gary, we have some guests in the room, or when does that happen?
That'll happen after public communication.
After public communication. Thank you very much. Gary, what's up next?
Next is public communication, Chair Smith.
Okey-dokey. We have some folks in the room, and I have some blue cards here, people who have arrived in person. Commissioner Fisher, would you like to vote on the previously presented consent agenda?
Thank you, Chair Smith, aye.
Aye. I'd like to add that Commissioner Fisher has voted in favor of the consent agenda. That vote is now 5-0. Thank you very much for Commissioner Fisher. First up is Yvonne Lazarus. Please come forward, state your name, area of residence, and you have three minutes.
Last week, Nancy Hall spoke to you about removing her mask while she spoke for three minutes, and you amended that. I don't believe you had a right to do that. I'll put my mask back on, but I'm tired of not hearing half of what's going on in this room when I'm here. And if the Health Department says I can go ahead and remove it for three minutes, I'm going to do that. I want to speak to you today about, let me get to it, equity, diversity, and inclusion. This is how I read it to be.
Excuse me, Yvonne, please pause the time here. Gary, what is our policy regarding masks in this room?
Yes, so, our policy is that everyone within this building needs to wear a mask or a face shield. The state, the governor has set the requirements, but we can go beyond that. So, that is our requirement at Clackamas County, so.
I'm wanting, you're telling me that the, how can the public even know what's going on with that kind of, the Health Department puts out one thing, and then you guys are going to change it?
It's not the Health Department, it's the Oregon Health Authority, and that rule specifically says that counties and businesses can impose more restrictive requirements, and that's exactly what Administrator Schmidt has done.
And why are you doing that? Why are we arguing over something like this when there is so much going on in this county that is really ugly? I don't understand it. I don't. We're supposed to all be working together, and right now, okay, I can't talk with this thing on. I can hardly breathe.
Yvonne, would you like to wear a face shield instead?
Pardon?
Would you like to wear your face shield instead? I would like to.
That thing was worse. I thought it would be better. That's why I asked for one, but it isn't.
I apologize sincerely for your discomfort in wearing a mask. However, we feel that our hands are tied. I was just giving some information, Gary, you just passed out something at the last minute?
That's what Yvonne asked, that's from Yvonne, yes.
Okay, and what does this, you know, Yvonne, I haven't had time to read this, I'm sorry.
I marked it, I marked it on the second page.
Yeah, I see the, the pink is highlighted. Are required to wear a mask, face covering when in an indoor space, unless the individual's under five years of age, is sleeping, is eating or drinking, you're not eating and drinking. I, we know your identity, visual comparison, such as the bank, okay, or law enforcement, is performing not limited to playing music. I mean, the exceptions that you highlighted, I, you are not engaging, you are not engaging in these, correct?
That's what I'm doing. I'm saying a speech for three minutes.
I, I'm sorry, I do not say speech. Gary, you want to have a point of clarification on this?
As the administrator, you, I have the authority, you give me the authority to manage operations for the buildings, and I've been very consistent for, in 19 months, that you wear a mask inside this building. So, it's up to you, Chair Smith, you're running this meeting, if you'd like to allow it to continue or not, but the policy for the building is, everyone wears a mask or a face shield.
This is a very touchy situation, and I believe people are very passionate about mandates. I personally do not support mandates. However, I am trying to comply with being as healthy as possible. I too am wearing a mask. I wear a mask in the normal course of my everyday business, except when I'm isolated in my office, which is allowed. I would appreciate it, as a friend of this commission, if you would please wear a mask.
All right.
Thank you kindly.
Equity: The quality of being fair and impartial. Diversity: The practice or quality of including or involving people from a range of different social and ethnic backgrounds, what makes us who we are. Inclusion: A state of being valued, respected, the focusing on the needs of every individual. I have not seen any diversity done here at all, where Mark is concerned. And I know that you keep thinking, I know you're thinking, this is such old business, but it's the old business from Jim Bernard and all that situation from Metro that has got us where we're at today. And if we don't take care of it, we're never going to get anywhere. And I'm still really, when I know that all of these people are coming into the country, and we are going to have to house the people that are coming into the country, I hope the feds are going to help us, because if they don't, I don't know where, I mean, we don't even know where we're at right now. We don't. And I'm real tired of it. You know, I've been coming up here for nine months, and sometimes I just want to stand up and scream. I know that if we don't pull together with all the horrible fires and this pandemic, Clackamas County is going to look like Moutonoma. And finally, finally, Portland's mayor took responsibility and said, this situation with the police, maybe I went at it wrong. Maybe I went at it wrong. Well, huh, do you guess? People, I won't go downtown Portland, and it breaks my heart, because I used to all the time. You all know, you, I mean, you know, and that's what upsets me. And you guys have the power, you have got to pull together. I don't care if you have personal differences, I don't care if you're, of different background, I don't care. You're speaking for us, and you're, you're to help us. I want that, please.
Thank you very much, Yvonne. I appreciate you coming forward today. Up next, Gina Talarino. Please come forward, state your name, area of residence, and you have three minutes.
My name's Gina, I live in Happy Valley. I'm going to read my speech from, I don't know, a couple of weeks ago.
Can you pull the microphone closer?
Or I could take my mask off.
Well, please pull your microphone closer.
Okay.
There you go.
How can I read?
It lowers, it lowers. There you go.
Okay.
Start the time over, Shannon, please. Thank you.
Commissioner Shoal, you sir are an American hero and a shining example of leadership. You are brave and strong, and we stand in solidarity with you because you stand for us. We are constitutionally-minded like you are. You understand the fight we are in, the fight to save our lives. You, oh, thank you for your service to America and fighting for us here in Oregon. I'm honored to call you my commissioner. We will not forget the attempts made to remove you by some on this commission. She seems to have left. Unfortunately, I wanted her to be here for this. My remaining communication will be directed at the rest of you, all of the rest of you. Are you for us or against us? You're going to have to answer with your actions, all of you. Words will no longer suffice. We brought you truth, we've shown you laws, we've referenced the Constitution of Oregon and the United States, we pointed out discrepancies in the official narrative and how things have been disastrously handled. We've asked about the money flow and the funding, who gets it, and what has been done with those funds. We've shared resources on where to find the truth for yourselves. That has made you responsible as elected officials. All of this has been recorded, so there are no more excuses for you. You know about Fauci's blunders and possible crimes, you know about the NIH, the CDC, the WHO, the US government, and even the government in Oregon, which you were a part of, and their abuse of power. You've seen these institutions cause irreparable harm to people across the world, including Oregonians. You know there's something wrong with the vaccine and mask mandate, everyone knows. Many died within days of being injected, and many others are permanently injured. And people that got the vaccine are now wishing that they hadn't. It's, it's so regrettable that you're still encouraging people to become injected with this experimental vaccine. The rules, mandates, ordinances, orders, all work together to plunder our God-given rights, our ability to earn an income, our children's education, the rules you have helped enforce. You even let these mandates swindle you out of your own authority and responsibility. Tudy said she must follow Kate Brown's lead, and why can't she go against her, when, when other counties have? You called a whole bunch of people here a few weeks ago and said.
No, I didn't, no, I didn't, I'm going to correct you.
Oh, good, okay.
I'm going to interrupt you right now on that, but thank you very much. Can you imagine what it would have been had I?
Okay, well, that can happen again. People can still come, like, they can come, and I guess people are scared now, so, that's funny. You are about to have a whole new challenge. We have noticed many problems in our leadership across Oregon and the United States. It really doesn't seem like our elected officials are representing us very well. This is a major problem. We are seeing more evidence each day that our elections were rife with trickery and malfeasance. It was even recorded, reported here that we had an audit going, which apparently was a lie? I don't know. What are we supposed to think? This is a major problem for all of us. We are going to demand a full forensic audit, and we will not let up until we get one. Our sacred right to vote should not be diluted or stolen. We deserve the truth, and we'll be relentless until we get it. We are all obviously peaceful, so please take note of that. You swore an oath, and we will uphold you to that oath. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I believe there's a commissioner in the queue still.
Yes, Commissioner Fisher would like to speak.
Commissioner Fisher, we made accommodations, very special accommodations, for you to attend in person today, and I'm saddened that you have left for the confines of your office. What would you like to say?
Chair Smith, I just wanted to let Ms. Talarino know that I am present, I have listened to everything that she said, appreciate all the input, and when it appears that the people that are attending will adhere to the requirement, unfortunately, there is a requirement due to the increase in COVID cases, I am happy to return. So, thank you very much.
I believe that the speakers did adhere to the requirement. Up next, Les Poole. Please come forward, state your name, your area of residence, and you have three minutes.
Interesting times. That's an understatement. Les Poole, I live in Gladstone, and I'm here regularly, as most of you know. And I'm known for being careful about what I say. Been here years. And the reason I bring that up is to establish some credibility, because there's so much commotion and anxiety out there, and we've got folks like Chris Waller and others calling in and going after Tudy and going after Mark and making claims that, that no one cares, and, and just on and on and on. So, I, I try to be very, very measured and careful about what I say. And I'm deeply concerned about the mandates, because one size doesn't fit all, regardless of any constitutional arguments, regardless of any numbers or factors or, or figures that the state produces, or how they get there, because they keep changing the counting methodology. I shouldn't say keep changing, but they have. There's a huge lack of trust in Salem, and that's what you're seeing here. The governor's not believable. The governor's never seen in public. We've been locked up a year and a half. Has she ever gotten up and made an inspirational speech? Has she ever stepped up and spoke off the cuff? Of course not. We don't have a leader, we have a controller. And the ridiculous continuous extensions of her executive authority over us, that's bizarre. And what does the media do? The media announces that the governor's done another press availability, as she was calling them. Press availability. The governor has a new mandate. The governor's issued a, an update. Well, that's all fluffy talk. The governor has exceeded any reasonable authority. We do not trust her, and we do not trust the Oregon Health Authority. And I didn't trust the Oregon Health Authority when they got their authority. Kind of spooked me when the Oregon Health Plan suddenly became the Oregon Health Authority in anticipation of Obamacare. So, I do not trust the authorities. That's really bad. That is unacceptable. And I'm not saying that everything's exaggerated, or they're all lying, or there's no truth in what's coming out of Salem. I'm saying that we are being milked. That's what I'm saying. And it's unfortunate, because you're going to have more and more folks here. And I hope that in the future, everyone understands that this is not an angry mob, we don't need five security people here. I understand that security's an issue, but we're not going to riot or burn the place down. This is Clackamas County. So, don't treat us like we're the enemy. That's the feeling people are getting. I know that's not your intent. I appreciate your time, and I wish I had more, because then we'd get on to the issues at hand, which are so many, I can't count them right now.
Thank you, Mr. Poole.
Thank you.
Our treatment of people who come to testify has been very good, and I have assured that. I have fought to have these meetings in person, Mr. Poole, and I take great exception to your inaccurate comments to the contrary. Because I'm chair is because you're here today able to speak when there are forces who did not want to have these meetings in person. So, I suggest that people take advantage of that while it's still here. We are one of the few bodies across Oregon, one of the few elected bodies across Oregon that welcomes public testimony. Shannon, who's up next?
I have three registered participants online. First up is Leah Robbins. Leah, please unmute yourself, state your name and residence, you have three minutes.
Thank you. Good morning, Chair Smith and Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Leah Robbins from Jennings Lodge. Many of your constituents aren't able to be at your meetings for work or other reasons, and like me, have watched or listened to them to keep aware of the state of your work. However, I was dismayed to see back in August what looks like the result of staff being bullied, much like they were a decade ago, under different leadership. When asked by the public about Commissioner Shoal's involvement in the shutdown of a vaccine clinic in Malala, County Administrator Gary Schmidt responded by parsing his words very carefully to say that Commissioner Shoal was not involved in the decision to shut it down. And yet, we know from comments of the Malala mayor and others that were it not for his influence, this would not have happened at all. And I've heard the chair on repeat occasions describe a fear of public information requests that effectively limits the use of email or response to email, and admonishment of others for their sensitive discussions over email. And so, I wonder if that's why I have yet to receive a response to an email from July 21st and 26th to Stephen Madcor, in part which read that I'm interested in your legal team's response to internal questions from code enforcement. to internal questions from code enforcement related to regulating short-term, one-day pop-ups in the public right-of-way. In my community, Jennings Lodge, unincorporated Clackamas County, we often find people setting up tables, tents, and flags along the sidewalk of McLaughlin Boulevard to sell political merchandise. I understand the trickiness of all the overlapping jurisdictional lines. I understand the county is the area, in this area, has land use authority, while the property owner, public or private, has specific controls on their property. This trickiness makes it very difficult for the general public to know who to contact and how to regulate what feels like an inundation of political propagandists using the common public right-of-way for their commercial benefit. I included in example detail and then complete with, "I'm a fervent believer in the First Amendment, all of the Bill of Rights, all of the constitutional amendments, but I seriously doubt that the county wants to allow for pop-up tents all along the right-of-way for any other uses. And I doubt the private properties that maintain and rely on the public to view their storefronts want to have these groups take up their parking spaces and compete for their business." I ask for a response to these questions. Does the county have code enforcement policy to cover the situation? Second, how does a member of the community effectively advocate for the fair enforcement of these policies? Third, is this a subject that the Board of Commissioners would be weighing in on? And fourth, which set of county offices are prime contacts for this? Planning, code enforcement, other?
Thank you very much, Leah. I'm going to stay on the line. I'm going to address some of the comments that you made where you have assumed them to be facts, and they may not be. Regarding the vaccination clinic, it was held at Malala High School. It was the superintendent, I believe, Gary, of that high school that asked our public health authority to move the vaccination clinic away from his school because he felt that it was too controversial. That's what happened. Regarding answering your emails, I don't know about that. If it was addressed to Stephen Madcor, if it was addressed to the BCC offices, I will say that our staff and the B C offices answer every single email, whether yours was forwarded on to county council. I am not aware of that. And Gary, regarding pop-ups, this is news to me. We have a code enforcement that works on that. So, Leah, if you want to go to the Department of Transportation and Development under permits, maybe that is the way to go. Gary, I would like you to address these issues that Leah Robbins raised.
Yes, on the last one, Leah, if you would please resend your email either to the Board Office, which is bcc@clackamas.us, that's the email address, or to me directly, it's gschmidt@clackamas.us. Either way, we'll make sure your questions are answered. On the vaccines, I apologize, I never meant to be clever or parse my words. Commissioner Shoal did not direct staff, our staff, to close that clinic in Malala. The school superintendent made that decision, talked to our public health director, and so they together decided to move the clinic. But Commissioner Shoal, you did not in any way direct me, our public health director, any staff. I'm confirming that 100% in public and writing. You can do a records request of my emails if you want. Others have done that, but Commissioner Shoal was not, did not direct staff in any way to cancel or change that clinic. Thank you.
Regarding the pop-ups.
We'll have to check on that. I don't have an answer for that.
Yeah, that's news to us. Commissioner Savas.
Yeah, I just want to just directly, Leah, just want to let you know that having a business on McLaughlin Boulevard for 25 years, I had a lot of experiences of different types of illegal activity on McLaughlin Boulevard. And the authority there is the state of Oregon. It's a state highway, it's a state right-of-way, and the county sheriff or code enforcement doesn't have much authority over that. So, I would always refer to the state of Oregon.
A good point of clarification, Commissioner Savas. I appreciate that. Shannon, who's up next?
Next up is Bill Weir. Bill, please unmute yourself, state your name and residence. You have three minutes.
Good morning, Chair Smith and Commissioners, Bill Weir Damascus. At the last public meeting, I requested information as to how the censor of Commissioner Shoal was processed back in January by you. It's difficult for a private citizen to follow how something this serious and what started as an allegation and a verdict of censor and demanding his resignation happened so quickly within a span of a few days. I was advised by Mr. Madcor that I should go to court to get my questions resolved. However, I find that reply dismissive when a taxpayer is simply asking questions that are not answered or given non-sequiturs to digest. I tried to find examples of past censors of Oregon public officials and demand of resignations, and there are a few. One was a state legislator back in 1971. That was 50 years ago. A few from minor offices, none on the county level, including Clackamas County. So, if my findings are correct, it would seem to me that before engaging in something so serious and precedent-setting that the commission would proceed with caution, so serious that it would brand a commissioner as undesirable and unqualified to hold a seat on commission, not only to the public, but also his colleagues and county staff that he would work with. So, then I'll try to narrow my question to executive meeting rules required by Statute 192 660. Executive meetings are used to consider the dismissal or disciplining or to hear complaints or charges brought against a public officer, employee, staff member, or individual agent. So, for those who did not request an open hearing. Public notice required. The governing body of the public body shall provide for and give public notice reasonably calculated to give actual notice to interested persons. And all minutes or recordings shall be available to the public within a reasonable time after the meeting. So, Commissioner Shoal was not aware of what was going to occur on January 14th. Why was the protocol of an executive session not given, Mr. Shoal? Thank you.
Well, isn't that interesting? I believe Commissioner Shoal was fully aware it was going to happen. Commissioner Shoal, are you a voting member of this board?
Yes.
Okay, yes, that was an affirmative. Commissioner, Stephen Madcor, please address what Mr. Weir was talking about in relation to public meetings law.
First off, I don't advise members of the public. I advise the governing body and other department heads. And lastly, Mr. Weir made claim that the county violated public records law when it had a censor resolution prepared and circulated at a public meeting. And I refute that. The county faithfully abides by public records law, public meetings law, on a regular basis. We ensure that. And I told Mr. Weir, if he has claims or facts to the contrary, he can present those to court, which is the avenue that aggrieved individuals would go if they challenged the conduct of the board for public meetings violations.
Thank you for that clarification. I too believe we were in compliance with all rules, regulations, laws, and public meetings. Who's next?
Christine Kennedy is our final speaker. Christine, please unmute yourself, state your name and residence. You have three minutes.
Good morning, Chair Smith, Commissioners, Administrator Schmidt. My name is Christine Kennedy. I live in Lake Oswego. I'm a retired nurse with 45 years of experience. First of all, I would like to share my condolences to any people who were impacted by the death of the nine Clackamas County individuals who died of COVID since the last report. Really glad to see that you have regular reports back. I think it's really important for us to keep our eye on the ball, and this is a continuing issue. This is what I think we really need to do at this point. We need to listen to experts. We need to continue to ask good questions. We need to continue to treat one another as compassionate human beings. We need to keep our focus on vaccinations, as is the Clackamas County Department of Public Health. My serious question and concern right now is how do we counter blatant lies, medical treatments that are not proven but contain risk? We know that the vaccines are effective. I refer people to the postings that you have online because you do have accurate information posted there. It's important that we continue to take this seriously. I want to see my grandchildren go back to school. That's my hope and wish, and that they be safe. And I hope you're hearing my words, Chair Smith, and that you're not reading because I'm very serious. I wish you all good day.
Anybody else?
That is the end of my list, Chair.
Okay. Thank you very much. Now, I think we come to the time of Gary. We have some good news.
Yes, there's a county administrator update. And first, a piece of business. So, Commissioners, as you know, of course, you are on recess from August 20 through September 6, 2021. Per the county code, I am authorized to sign contracts and agreements on your behalf when the board is in recess. I'm pleased to say that I signed nothing while you're, or no board. I signed no agreements or contracts while you were on recess. I just did some other business. That is because our outstanding staff either made sure everything was sent to you before you went on recess, or they held it until you returned. So, I just want to report that for the record. I did not sign any agreements or contracts on your behalf during your recess. Thank you. Next, I'd like to share good news, and today I have wonderful, outstanding news to share with you, and that is to recognize 10 county employees who are receiving the Spirit of Excellence Awards from Clackamas County. Now, what are these? This is the ninth year that our county activities team, or the A Team, those are county employees who volunteer their time to devise ways of how we can recognize and support our county employees year-round. So, the A Team, in collaboration with Human Resources, are presenting the Spirit of Excellence Awards. And again, this is the ninth year that we've done this. So, during the past year, county employees submitted over 45 Spirit Awards to recognize county employees who model our core values in their day-to-day work. A leadership committee of staff then met, and of those 45 spirit award recipients, identified 10 employees that really went beyond the call of duty during their work, and those employees are going to receive the Spirit of Excellence Award. So, our core values are spirit, S-P-I-R-I-T, which are service, professionalism, integrity, respect, individual accountability, and trust. Spirit. So, these employees have exemplified all of these county core values during their day-to-day work, serving the public of Clackamas County. So, I want to thank these incredible employees, all 45, and especially the 10 that we're going to recognize today. So, with the support of Jackie from Human Resources, I'm going to announce each employee and their department. We'll ask them to come forward. They'll get a certificate. And after all 10 are announced, I'll ask if we could do a quick photo op. We'll appropriately space ourselves, but a quick photo op so we can have a picture of the board with these employees. So, here we go. So, Jackie, if you're ready. So, first, Casey Palmer, please come forward. Casey's from Health, Housing, and Human Services. And not everyone was able to be here, so we'll keep going. Next, Stephen O'Sullivan, if you're here, please, okay. He's from Health, Housing, and Human Services. Randy Frankie, all right, from Health, Housing, and Human Services. Patrick Doherty from Transportation and Development. Adam Boils from Technology Services. I know she's here. Kanai Nishi from Health, Housing, and Human Services. There you are. Welcome, applause, yes, absolutely. Dennis O'Hara from Health, Housing, and Human Services, yes. Nancy Bennett from Health, Housing, and Human Services. Kim Fox from Health, Housing, and Human Services. Jody Lagerway from Transportation and Development. All right. So, Health, Housing, and Human Services rocks. That is the most identified department from these award winners. But just want to thank you all for your outstanding work, and also those that couldn't be here today. We will have all of the submissions and the actual reasons why you were nominated are on the county Intranet webpage on the A Team section. And I just want to thank you again for your outstanding work and services to the public of Clackamas County and to each other. So, with that, Commissioners, if you don't mind coming forward, we want to take a quick photo op with you and our staff.
Would you like us to stand behind?
Yes.
Would that work?
Hey, Laura, would you like to stand and fall? Would you like to stand behind you with us?
I might look better.
I'm smiling, can you tell?
It's a beautiful smile.
Okay, thank you.
I was smiling, by the way.
Thank you again, Spirit of Excellence Awards winners. And thank you, Jackie, and the Human Resources team as well. That is my update for today. Thank you, Chair Smith.
Thank you, Gary. Now is the time for Commissioner Communication. First is Commissioner Shoal, I believe.
Well, thank you. And good morning, Clackamas County. On Afghan refugees, regarding the meeting last week with Senator Merkley and Congresswoman Bonamici and the Muslim Education Center, there are approximately 50,000 Afghan refugees coming to the United States. The distribution amongst the states is unknown at this time. These refugees are coming on special immigrant visas. They worked with the US military and the US government, some of them for the last 20 years. They are Afghans who hoped for a better form of government for their country and would be in grave peril if they stayed in Afghanistan. We hope to learn more about numbers, federal funding, and distribution from Merkley and Bonamici in the next couple of weeks. On the I-205 widening project. I-205 from Stafford Road to Highway 213 begins work spring of next year. Phase one is 10th Street to Highway 213. Phase two begins in 2025 from Stafford Road to 10th Street. ODOT is still working on a plan to implement tolling to pay for this project with the earliest tolling beginning in 2024. Key decisions on tolling and congestion pricing will be made in the coming months. Residents of our county have strong reservations about tolling and congestion pricing. Learn more about it and become involved in the dialogue. See the ODOT website. And for an alternative perspective, check out the Transportation Alliance page on Facebook. Talk to Les Poole, Paul Edgar. They're very informative-type people to talk to on this subject. Tolling and congestion pricing comes with big potential problems for Clackamas County, and your opinion will make a difference. And look for a town hall on this subject coming up in the next few months. On unemployment benefits. Pandemic unemployment benefits ended on Monday. There are many jobs available in Oregon and in Clackamas County at this time. Now might be a good time to consider a new line of work or a new career. If you're looking for a new career, how about considering healthcare and nursing? We have a critical need here in the county. Please give it some consideration. Also, take a look at the trades. There are some very interesting and well-paying jobs in the trades right here in this county. On redistricting, as you know, Oregon now has a sixth congressional district and a sixth rep to the House of Representatives. The map is being worked on to incorporate that new congressional district. Please see the Secretary of State website on redistricting. Look at the maps being considered. See the times of the hearings, and then make a statement at one of the hearings for your current congressional district. Your voice on this matter is very important in the next few days. On 9/11 remembrance. I will always remember the day at the Pentagon on the morning of September 11th and the 200 people who lost their lives there that morning. We need to take a moment this Saturday to remember those people there and in New York and in Pennsylvania who lost their lives that day. This Saturday, September 11th, 2:00 to 2:30, right here in the Circle of Honor, will be the Fourth Annual Patriot Day Remembrance Ceremony. Please come if you are able. On mandates, COVID, and our current situation. On mandates, COVID, and our current situation. Remember, please, the USA, we have separations of power that is intended to limit the concentration of power in any one group or person. When those separations of power are circumvented, it's time to speak out. Every generation must be willing to fight for their liberty. Freedom is not free. You've heard that a lot, but it's so true. Stand up for your rights as a sovereign American citizen. Viruses are here to stay, and so are we. Calm down. Limit exposure to negative media and confusion, and live your life. Smile again. Thank you, and God bless Clackamas County.
Thank you, Commissioner Scholl. Commissioner Fisher, I believe you were up first, and my list got confused. Go ahead.
Oh, no worries, Chair Smith. I always like the not really knowing who's going. It keeps the, you know, us on our toes, for sure. So welcome back, Commissioners. I kind of like this setup because I can see everybody, which we can't do when we're all up there. We can only look at our screens. So the break, I think, was a healthy one. I know from myself, I visited my son in Oahu, Hawaii, and I left, I think I got there two days before the governor of Hawaii made an announcement of, "Don't come here, our cases are going up." And I'm like, "Oops, sorry, I'm here." And I had that experience of walking through a community that was facing a, going back into a lockdown. And it was interesting. There was a real fear and a, just a heaviness that when you talk to people that work and live in Oahu, they did not want a lockdown. Their economy really suffered through the last lockdown. And I had never been to Oahu. It wouldn't be a place that I would say, "I'm going to go spend a trip in Oahu if not for my son moving there in May." But it was interesting to see that the businesses that were still on the app that you look for when you look in Maps to go somewhere, and then you get there and it's closed. So that definitely happened. I did have the experience about two or three days after there was the concern about a lockdown. The mayor of Honolulu announced that they were not going to be shutting down the economy. They were going to be moving to a vaccine verification process for certain places, bars, restaurants, gyms, concerts, movie theaters, those types of things, not retail or grocery stores. I thought it was really interesting to be in that place because everywhere we went, we had to sign in. They had a QR code that we had to put on our phone and put in our information for contact tracing. It was a different world being there. I did notice that when the fear of shutting down the economy again was lifted, the spirits of that place also really lifted. And employees who are finally back to work were happy that they were not going to be having to lose their jobs again. There was also concerns right down in the, where the Waikiki, where there is Waikiki, there is a beautiful ocean there, and there were people demonstrating their First Amendment rights, concerned about the governor or the mayor of Honolulu taking this step and requiring those verification. So I got to witness all of that in a different little place. It was like a sort of a parallel universe of being away from here. I am very concerned. I think the Commission knows about our kids and making sure that they are able to be part of their school and their community. And I have two, actually, I have three grandchildren, two grandchildren, who are going to school now, in, just started school. My husband and I, with their mother's permission, took them to Enchanted Forest last weekend. And we went through the talk. Okay, you got to keep your masks on. And they were real good about that. And I was, I was nervous, I'll have to be honest, nervous about going into that space. But I have to say, the people that were there and the kids were amazing. And there was a, it really felt responsible and safe. People did wear masks, adults, kids. There was one family that wasn't wearing masks. And people stayed their distance from them. And it was an absolutely delightful and wonderful day. I feel like our kids, our families, have really lost out over the last many months because we just didn't feel safe going to do things like that. And I want us to find a way to live with viruses. I think this is going to be like an accordion. Right now, we're in a very extremely high risk. During those times, masks, social distancing, limiting some gatherings, making sure that prioritizing safety. As for me, I'm continuing to do all those things. I'm contributing to our economy, going to restaurants, meeting with, one-on-one with other folks who are vaccinated. I know there is some risk because the virus can affect me. Unfortunately, I feel pretty safe that I won't become seriously sick because I am vaccinated. But it is a very difficult time. Individually, we have our concerns, but broadly, I think that's where we have to look. We have to look at how are we going to move forward? We need to keep our economy moving. We need to protect each other as best as we can when we are in these situations of extremely high risk. Appreciate our staff in following and helping to facilitate following the public health recommendations that during this extremely high-risk time that we do practice masking and social distancing in the workplace. I'm looking forward to those numbers coming down. I'm hopeful, crossing my fingers, that like in India and Britain, Delta was way up here, and then it went boom. I'm really crossing my fingers that that happens here, and we can go back to less restrictions. This is the new world. Yes, freedom, liberty is so part of our values, but so is collective community and working together for each other to keep each other safe. So let's keep our heart and our focus on our kids that are back in school. Let's try to do the most we can to keep them going to school, to keep those cases coming down, and to protect them. Because they don't have a choice in this. And I really don't want to see Oregon's hospitals and ICUs fill up with children as other states such as Texas and Florida. Let's keep Oregon's kids safe. Thank you, Chair Smith.
Thank you, Commissioner Fisher. Commissioner Savas, you're up.
Thank you, Chair. One thing, and believe it or not, Commissioner Scholl and I did not rehearse this. Matter of fact, Chair Smith and I discussed this this morning. Just so happens that my topic for today is about the congestion pricing study that Metro is currently underway with. So I wanted to give everyone an update and let people know that next Thursday morning, prior to this meeting, we will be at the Joint Policy Advisory Committee on Transportation discussing and voting on whether or not to support the Metro Regional Congestion Pricing Study as is, or whether you go back to the drawing board and fully examine all the impacts and benefits and all the things that we expressed in our July letter to Metro and JPAC. It's coming up for a vote. I will be presenting this on Tuesday to my colleagues. And it's becoming very clear that people don't understand the three terms out there. There's different types of tolling. That opens up a can of worms in itself. There's variable pricing, and then there's congestion pricing. So let's just talk about congestion pricing for a moment because that is really what the title of this study is. Congestion pricing is basically something that you will be priced when you drive down a particular road or cordon or boulevard. But this one here is on the local roads. It's not the interstates that this study examines. It's really studies, it studies the local streets that either the state of Oregon owns, or your local city, or your county owns. And the impacts there are quite significant when it comes to people either diverting or not really going to the store or whatnot, or maybe not taking the same driving patterns. But the whole idea is basically, as defined by Metro, is to change people's behavior into a different form of transportation. Well, if one lived in Portland, you would have a lot of alternatives other than driving your car. You would have a grid, a grid road system. You'd have sidewalks in that grid road system. You have light rail, you have transit, you have bike lanes. You have a number of amenities that can move people. In Clackamas County, we have a lot less of that. And not only that, but we're a lot hillier area. So we have, our topography in Clackamas County is very challenging. Very little of Clackamas County is flat, like Portland. So the challenges are higher. The distances between some of these important destinations are longer and more difficult, are often not lit, and often not have sidewalks on them. So change of behavior is not really an option for a lot of people. So essentially, the impacts, which we're asking really Metro to, and JPAC to study further, are number one, unknown, but likely significant. So I'm going to bring this to my colleagues on Tuesday. I know that other jurisdictions are doing the same thing in order to prepare for the vote on Thursday morning, prior to our business meeting a week from this morning. So just want to give you all that really update, you know, got concerns. HB 3065 passed the legislature this year, which tolls, puts, will put an initial tolling program on I-205, as Commissioner Scholl was kind of discussing there a little bit. And after that, years afterwards, it would perhaps phase into congestion or variable pricing. We're not sure where the revenues would go. And I think that we've heard numbers so much as $6 to get up on the freeway and to go to the local store and back if you have to use the interstate, for example. And places like Oregon City, or Westland, or Lake Oswego, or Stafford, that's actually a reality for some people, actually, to get across to where they need to go. So that could be, that could be significant. Could be $6 there and $6 back. That's 12 bucks, and that could impact families and everyone else. That's just a rough number. I'm not sure that anyone's wedded to that, but that was a number that was thrown out by an elected official from another jurisdiction. So that's what I've been working on, and that's what we will be working on next week in great detail. And hope to have more from my colleagues on Tuesday. Thank you.
Look forward to that, Commissioner Savas. Up next, Commissioner Schrader.
Well, hey, good morning, everybody. I'm glad to be back, to see everybody. I missed you all. I love the county. It's good, it's good to be back. It's good to kind of get back in the saddle again, start doing the work of the people. And with that in mind, I'll just mention a few things. Basically, I had my first meeting with the Community Economic and Workforce Development Group at the National Association of Counties. I am, I'm happy to say, they put me back as vice chair again. And, you know, we're working on that. And we had a great first meeting the other day. And I've been looking through NACO for information that I think we're going to get some clarity on the ARPA dollars through the home program and potentially, hopefully, being able to use some of that for wraparound services. I had a brief conversation with Rod Cook this morning. And I'm not saying it's possible, but some of the information I was hearing at that meeting, I was like, hey, I think, I think we need to take a look at this. The other thing that I looked at as a result of that meeting is that National Association of Counties has a Counties for Kids program. And I'm going to take a look into that because I think it's going to really integrate pretty nicely with our workforce folks, childcare, what that means, you know, to get people back to work, and how we can, how we can do that so parents can safely leave their kids somewhere and get back in that workforce and really keep moving things ahead. Also, I attended a meeting yesterday with the Willamette Falls Locks Commission. Chair Smith was instrumental in that previously as well. And I'm happy to say that we are, the Locks Commission is now working on putting together the Locks, Willamette Falls Locks Authority. I am part of the subcommittee that's going to be looking at people or seeing, you know, looking at the criteria of who we need to have on the authority and coming up with a list of folks who we would like to invite. And I will make sure that I run that by this whole group under issues. I'll be talking about it under issues on next Tuesday, so that. But I want to thank Chair Smith. You really moved it along. And finally, after so many years, we got the bill passed. We got, you know, the state commission transitioning to move to an authority. And I'm pretty jazzed about that. That has been a long time coming, and it is listed as statewide significance. So, you know, good for us. The other legacy project is still moving along. We've been working, Commissioner Savas and I have been working with that continually with Metro and other folks, and we'll have some more meetings about that in the near future. The other thing I wanted to talk a little bit about was, yeah, 911. I don't know if most people know, but I've lived, I'm pretty much a webfoot now. I've lived most of my adult life here in Oregon, you know, since I was like mid-20s, you know. So I've actually lived here longer than I did in New York. But I grew up in Portchester, New York, which is right outside of the city, next to the Bronx. And as a kid, was, you know, we, it was nothing for us to hop on a train and go in and out of New York City. And, you know, and I went to, you know, a high school there where, you know, kids, we were urban New Yorker kids. And when that day happened, ironically, I was in Bend in a leadership meeting through Portland State University at the time. And I hadn't, didn't realize what had happened. And I remember waking up that morning, and it was a beautiful day out. And of course, I don't listen to the news or anything in the morning because I don't want to start my day that way. I'll find out. If anything, I really need to find out, I'll find out later in the day. So I walked into this, the room with everybody, and I go, "Oh, isn't this just a beautiful morning?" And the whole room went silent. I was like, looking around going, "What?" And my mentor professor from Portland State University, Dr. Bud Cass, he said, "Two planes just went into the towers. They've collapsed." And I remember being with that whole leadership team that week and at night going, going back and watching the cleanup. But it was very personal to me because I knew that area. I lived there. I like knew, I had a close friend who escaped. You know, she was in one of the buildings next door, but she had to get the, I mean, they were moving everywhere. And to see people just going across the Brooklyn Bridge and the, and the, God, the firefighters and the police officers we lost, it was just amazing. And I remember coming home from Bend and how proud I felt of being an Oregonian because there was not a town that I hadn't traveled through, not one that didn't have flags up everywhere. It was absolutely amazing. Small rural communities in my state now were honoring the New Yorkers. You know, those of us that, you know, lived there, grew up there, and the folks that lost their lives there. And I have had an opportunity, Commissioner Scholl, to visit the Pentagon. And I would suggest when we go to DC, that would be a place we would go because it's such a moving memorial of benches, empty benches, and names of the people who perished that day. So it's pretty remarkable, and I'll absolutely never, never forget it. And with that, with this remembrance, because I think we're all going to try and be there on Saturday at 2, I just want to give a shout out to DJ Ruger. DJ is the guy who helped pull this together. He's a Vietnam veteran. I call him one of my bunker buddies. We're pretty, pretty close. And he has made this a part of what this county is about. And Patriot Day was signed into law by George Bush on November 30, 2001. And then President Obama expanded the commemoration to recognize it as a national day of service and remembrance. And across this nation, all flags will be flown at half-mast in remembrance of 911. And one more anecdote, and I'm sorry I'm talking so much, but the Circle of Honor, okay? Two things. The Circle of Honor out there was really moved forward by my dear friend Chip Salmons, who lived in the county for a very long time. He's now kind of traveling the United States with his wife. But he was the one- He's now kind of traveling the United States with his wife, but he was the one, a Vietnam veteran as well, who worked with the county to make sure that that Circle of Honor was placed there. So, that whole area would constantly be a reminder for us of how we respect the folks who have served our country and our military. And I'm going to give a shout out to Chair Smith because you were the one responsible, I think, to work with some folks here in Oregon City to get the Dahl Memorial here. And he is Oregon's only Congressional Medal of Honor winner, and he died, I think it was in Vietnam as well, and his memorial also is facing the Circle of Honor. So, in remembrance of all those folks, and I'm proud, I'm proud that we have a county that really is going to pay tribute to honor and remember what happened a full 20 years ago. I can't believe it's been, can't believe it's been that long. And other than that, I'll tell you my saga of what it was like. I finally saw my grandchildren for the first time in two years in person. I'll save the saga of five COVID tests I had to take a long way for another time. And I do have to tell folks, I was negative every single time, and I'm convinced, okay, I got to put a word in here, I'm convinced it was because I was vaccinated. I think it helped. I'm pretty, you know, felt good. And so, because of that, I was able to visit them. But that is a total story for another time. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Schrader. Yes, it is good to be back, but I think the break was quite necessary for us. I know I have come back with a sense of calm and peace, and I wish that on every single Clackamas County employee, that they remember that we are in public service to others, and that's very important as we work for a government. Remember why you wanted to come to Clackamas County to become an employee, and we will ensure your success as we all move together. These times are really unprecedented, and we just remember, remember who we are and what your core is all about and what you represent. During the break, I visited Mount Shasta or Lake Shasta area, and it was just gorgeous down there. And then toward the end, we went up into northern Washington, right on the Canadian border, and I visited a place that I didn't really know existed, and it's called the Peace Arch. And the Peace Arch is a park that is between Canada and the United States, and neither country has jurisdiction. It's a neutral territory. Tribes don't even have jurisdiction. It's its own entity, and it's absolutely gorgeous, and rarely do we see parks that have as many flowers annuals, and I'm a big flower person, and just the maintenance of those. And while we were there on Sunday, we had people, groundspeople, working. We had met some Canadian friends there who brought lunch, and as we're there, people started congregating and coming, and I just noticed a real sense of tranquility, and I felt totally peaceful there, as the people were very peaceful there, hence the name Peace Arch. Maybe it has some magical qualities. I think it might be fun to bring the Peace Arch here to Clackamas County in our Circle of Honor, but it was just a nice time. Now, the Canadians aren't able to drive over. They had somebody drive them, and they walked across the border. We were able to drive to the park, and I'm not sure why that is. I have no idea why that is, but they were more than happy. And, you know, they really look to the United States still as the leader in a lot of the liberties and safety protocols and good health. I find that really interesting. We had a great conversation with them, and I realized exactly how much we really do have in common with our neighbors to the north. It was very important that we did that. Regarding 9/11, we all have our stories. I was in the legislature at the time, and we were on break since September, and I was getting my fourth grader ready for school. And I had the news on, as I always do, and I saw those images immediately and thought to myself, "Oh, my God." I immediately knew and sensed the implications of that. I took my daughter to school, and her fourth-grade teacher at the time was a friend who had relatives staying right in this area. She was a bit panicked and didn't know what to do about it. And then I had been scheduled that day to speak at a Rotary Club luncheon in Moalala, which continued, but I was glad to be around people and receive comfort. But it was very trying times, and it forever changed the course of, I believe, our country and how we view international relations. But with that in mind, and we all have our duties we'll be attending to, I have three functions I'll be attending on Saturday, as I know all my Commissioners will be attending functions as well, and just remember those who died, you know, and remember our first responders, who were so quick to give their lives to try to save people. That was very important. Thank you, Commissioners, for a very good meeting. With that in mind, we will adjourn.